Good evening, everybody. How are you doing?
Good.
Good, everybody good? You hear me okay? My name is Brian Connors and welcome to the 2014 Murieta City Council Forum. And it's my pleasure to be here, I'm moderating this evening. I'm the Director of Marketing for Southwest Healthcare Systems. And it's my pleasure to be here with the candidates for this year. We have accepted questions in the format, so you understand, we've accepted questions from the public via mail, email, and delivery at the Chamber offices, and through our website until Monday evening. Is this from this past Monday, the previous Monday, Patrick? Okay. The questions that were accepted were questions that are not candidates specific, but ones that will make a difference to the future of Murieta. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement. The candidate that is seated in Seat 1 will go first. Who's in Seat 1 tonight? All right, Patrick. After each candidate has given their opening statements, I will begin with the questions. Each question will be answered by all candidates, and each will have one minute to answer the question. Question 1 will be answered first by a candidate in Seat 1, and then still on down the line. The second question will be answered first by candidate number 2, and then down the row. Patrick Gillis, our President, CEO of Murieta Chamber of Commerce, Patrick. He'll be in the front row. Hey, round of applause. He'll have the cards that will list 30 seconds to let you know how much time you have left to answer. They will also have one that has 10 seconds, and then a stop, as you demonstrated there so efficiently. And then you'll be able to wrap it up. So, again, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you all for being here. With that said, we'll begin. Pardon me? Pledge of allegiance, thank you. Thank you so much, absolutely. Everyone rise, please. Thank you, Patrick, for our pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a very quick public service announcement. It was contacted by the lady who's the Marketing Director at the very new daycare center northwest corner of Nutmeg and Clinton Keith. And she requested all candidates withdraw their signs and forthwith. They have a grand opening in two days, and they have no place for their signs. And on the 18th of October, they have a fall festival. And she said, "You're welcome to put your signs back up on the 19th or after that." Thank you.
I also have this from the City Clerk's office, correct, Patrick? That we can read here. So this is for the election process. The California Elections Code states that the person who receives a plurality of the votes cast for any office is elected. Therefore, the three candidates with the highest number of votes will be elected a City Council member of the city of Murieta. In the event of a tie vote, Murieta Resolution Number 14-3230 states, quote, "That in the event of a tie vote, if any two or more persons receive an equal and the highest number of votes for an office, and as certified by the elections official, the City Council, in accordance with the Elections Code Section 15651A, shall set a date, time, and place when some of the candidates who have received the tie vote appear and will determine the tie by law." Here's some other information you may, or may not want to mention. Thank you, Patrick, I read exactly what you told me in this email. I'm gonna mention everything. Today, October 6th, is the first day of early voting. This is the first day of the Registrar of Voters, Office Mails, Vote by Mail ballots to voters. Early voting may be done at the Registrar of Voters' office. You may drop off your Vote by Mail ballot at Murieta City Hall in the City Clerk's office from October 6th to November 3rd. Please note that City Hall is closed on Fridays. October 20th is the last day to register to vote for the November 4th election. October 28th is the last day to request a Vote by Mail ballot from the Registrar of Voters. And October 29th is the recommended last day to mail a ballot locally with high likelihood the Registrar will receive it in time and be counted in the November 4th election. Bylaws, ballots that are not in the Registrar's possession before 8:00 PM cannot be counted, even if they are postmarked before the deadline. With that said, we'll go ahead and start our introductions. Right here, and then down the line. You have the microphone here, make sure it's turned on.
Well, thank you everyone for coming again. It's nice to see some people out here getting involved and taking a part in this opportunity here. I'm Matthew Alonzo, former Army Ranger, police officer. I've played my whole life out there. If you don't, please, look who you have, come talk to me. But I would like to use my time here to address some concerns I have. Some of these concerns I actually like to direct toward Mr. Gabriel. Your descriptions on your jobs and your background are pretty vague and ambiguous, and people ask and receive the same kind of answers. Still, with a lot of research, I've been researching a lot of candidates. I still am unable to fully find out much about your background or what you currently do. Under John, I can't find anything. Under John with an H, I hope to find some information through the California Contractors Board. Yeah, I've seen throughout the campaign that people have asked these questions on Facebook and have been deleted or removed. Some concerns have been brought up about that. Along those same lines, through my research, I noticed that you've talked about this certificate that you got from the Veterans Memorial Committee. And I've discovered that there that you've been to about two meetings, and most of the people there don't even know who you are, including the Secretary of the Committee. As a matter of fact, that's true, that that's offensive to me. I've also heard multiple complaints about different types of musings or intimidation tactics issued by you or your friends in your behalf. As a candidate and resident, my job is to ask these type of questions. And the voters deserve all the facts, get all the truth out there. Because we people hold the power, we make the decisions. I look forward to this opportunity tonight to address these concerns, to put them to rest on record, so there's no more concern. We want the answers, please, on the record.
Let me get to your point. You'll be able to respond when we get to your point. These are introductions. Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, these were introductions for two minutes.
That was an introduction?
It's an introduction. That's his choice of an introduction. Mr. Gibbs.
Good evening. It is my honor to serve as your Council Member, Mayor of 2008, again in 2013. We managed to crash a county in housing foreclosure crisis, and now we are managing a deterrent which has witnessed increased demand from developers to process their water supply projects. In spite of the 25% loss of revenue, roughly 10 million per year, the town developers have continued to build their services to our citizens. Your city today is on the right path and is served by a great city manager who has hired phenomenal departments. More jobs are created in Murieta than were lost in the Great Recession. No city has a better economic development department than we are making business friendly a priority. But we do have standards that we rigorously enforce to ensure that quality of life is maintained. As one of the safest cities in the nation, with high schools that are in the top 10% of all unit schools, we are a community that is an exceptionally desirable location. Murieta has proven leadership, and its focus on attracting the industries and jobs of the future will be balanced. Carefully, through a small town, caring and connected community that I have lived in for 15 years, remains one of those neighbors know another, and citizens experience a lifestyle that is second to none. Thank you for your attention, and I'm going to follow up to your questions.
Alan Wong, resident for over 40 years here in the city of Murieta. Met my wife at Murieta Elementary in 6th grade. We are proud to be residents and a fourth generation of Wong's here in Murieta. My grandparents and great-grandparents still live here in Murieta. Started my service with Murieta as a volunteer firefighter while I was in high school. Chose that career where I serve today as a Battalion Chief in administration for the City of Anaheim, and I'm also currently the Emergency Management Director for the City of Anaheim. Served on the Steering Committee, Public Safety Traffic Commission, Planning Commission, as a Council Member and currently your Mayor, where I proudly am here to tell you we remain one of the safest cities in the nation due to the early work that we've done. When you elected me in 2010, there wasn't a lot going for the nation where the worst economic crisis we've ever seen, foreclosures were up, hospitals were nearly shut down, businesses were closing. Today, we are a much different place for your participation. Foreclosures are non-existent. Property values have increased by 50% in some areas. Businesses are starting to come back. Those hospitals that were nearly shut down are now passed their state examination, expanded. We've built new hospitals and record-setting times. We have others that are coming here to the nation. I am proud, excuse me, to Murieta, I am proud to say our fire services patched here, looked at the empirical data, and in Murieta, you are four and a half more times likely to survive a heart attack than the rest of the nation. That's because of the good work we continue to do on the council, and that I want to continue to do as your representative. My name is Alan Wong, and I'm asking you to reelect me to Murieta City Council, November 4th, 2014. Thank you very much.
Good evening. It was hard to keep your wife's score in one minute. Patrick is sitting there watching us walk. So we'll make it quick. My name is Jonathan England. I'm 49 years old. I've lived in California vast majority of my life. As for this musling, this campaign has had personal impacts for the service. That's from individuals that are up here with us on this stage tonight. This has transpired for a while. The officers standing in the room tonight have to be here because I've received death threats to my family and my children. There's far more to this than just a campaign anymore. I've been attacked without degrees. I've worked my entire life, I have two children, I've put them in college. You want to talk about my businesses? My campaign information, there would be more than what I'd like to talk to you. I've been attacked because it's that I don't have an advanced degree. Well, I admire anyone that's obtained an advanced degree. Let's talk about what advanced degrees have achieved here. An empty golden triangle. A hospital without an off-ramp. Many amenities that don't exist. So if common sense is what you're looking for, that's what I have. I've been on my own since I was 15, and I support my family, and I care about my community. I love the people of this community. I love them who work hard, honestly, without a personal agenda. I have no financial investments other than my home and my family. And I understand, it's not what you make, it's what you keep. So maybe all the other candidates choose streetwise students like this as well, and what their dealings are, and what their agendas may or may not be. Thank you for your time, and I would be more than willing to take anyone's phone call if I was to share it with you.
Hi, my name is Diana Seraphin. Everybody calls me Diane, and I'm known as the red light camera lady in town. Yes, I did get rid of the red light traffic cameras in the city, and good news, Ocean Side is taking theirs down too. I was raised in the plumbing industry. I can fix anything plumbing. I even laid out the store in for the Newport Beach City Hall. I could read blueprints. I knew all the codes, regulations, back when I was 16 till about 30. We moved to Murieta when I was 88. I don't talk about my history, and I don't, I just don't like to brag. But when my husband died in 93, I had a choice. I chose to go back to school. I went to California Baptist College, graduated cum laude, got a DS degree in IT, and then also an AA and an AS in the same month. The AS is in math and science, and I also earned my Microsoft certification. This was done while I was raising my two sons, working full-time, and trying to survive. My big issues are jobs in the city, the traffic, and personal private property rights. Since everybody knows me about the traffic, we got a law passed by Murray Waltrip, AB 1447. The funds are available for us to synchronize our roads. I'm still pushing really hard to get our red and yellows added one second to make our intersections safe. Loma Linda, the city of Loma Linda did the synchronization and added one second, and it's been two years since they've had an accident or a ticket. I would like you to vote for me, November 4th, Diana Seraphin. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Barton. Thank you very much, Patrick, with Chamber Manager here. Obviously, my accent will give away that I'm not a native in California. I was born and raised on the East Coast, close to Boston. At the early age of 19, while in college, I joined the Marine Corps. And after completing college, I went into service for about four, five years, and ended up being 27. So I retired as a Lieutenant Colonel from the Marine Corps. Following that, my wife and I, my last seven years, were here in Murieta. We bought a first and only house in 2002. And we've lived here since. When I retired from the Marine Corps, I pursued a different career in the Department of Defense contracting industry. And I was one of those people making that long commute down to San Diego. And let me tell you, it's a long commute when you do it every day. As my wife said, it probably aged me twice in six years than the three plus years that I did. So I understand very well that I have a personal reason for one of my priority items, and why I'm running for Murieta City Council, is I want to continue the good work that the council has done. I want to be a member of that. And I want to do everything I can to bring more jobs, good-paying jobs, to Murieta. I'd like it to be that the people who live here can work here as well. I also care very, very much about property and our rights. It's very high. Any vote that I would cast as a member of the City Council will take that into effect first and foremost. And I want the quality of life here in this town, this city, to continue to get even better than it already is. My name is Brian Barton. Do you want to be a candidate with two D's on the ballot? So I look forward to answering these questions, and thank you very much for your support.
I'd like to thank the Chamber for having this event again. My name is Ruth Ann Taylor-Burger, and I have lived in Murieta for about 25 years. And I have a deep connection with this community. I participated in the incorporation process. I've been on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. I have, I'm in my second term on the Planning Commission, and this year, I'm chairman. I'm running for City Council because I want to give back to the community that I love. I want to protect our quality of life now and for our future residents. And I want to represent women, the other half of the population. I have over 30 years of experience in both public and private sector and community planning, transportation infrastructure, managing multimillion-dollar complex budgets, consecutive leadership, and consensus building. And please check out my resume. It is posted at City Hall through grueling application process that we went through earlier in the year. It's extensive. I will work to keep Murieta one of the safest cities in the United States by funding additional personnel and equipment as needed, which is why I've been endorsed by the Murieta Police Officers Association. I continue to provide new roads and interchange and flood control projects for the city. I know how government works, where to get money and how to bring it back. I want to set policies that attract continued business investment to our community. Everyone that watches City Hall front door is a potential customer. A stable, consistent council is the key to maintaining our quality of life and attracting continued business investment. And I support business-friendly practices that provide a level planning table for all investors. So when you look at the applicants that are out here, look at the council's personal qualifications, the experience, and the results. Now let's talk about the triangle. The triangle was approved over a year ago. It is a project that exists now, and it could be moved today. It is not the council that is holding this up. It's the applicant that has chosen to take a different course. Thank you. Please vote for Ruth Ann Taylor-Burger on a November 4th.
Thank you, candidates, appreciate that. Okay, now on to our question and answer period. And if I could clarify something here. This is, the format is a forum, not a debate. So here's what we'll do, just to clarify. I'll read the question. You'll have one minute to answer that question. How you answer that is up to you. I won't define it, and you'll get more if you go have one minute from Patrick right there. And then when your time is up, and you'll go to the next campaign, you'll choose how you answer that question. Okay? With that said, we'll go ahead and start with Matthew here. On question number one. With the economic growth and business development of our city, what is your plan for sustainability to the city and its resources?
First, we need to start with business. The residents are growing at a alarming rate. Business, business is what we need to, it's a game, John. Business is what we need to grow. We need to figure out the zone, we need to make sure we're front of it, we need to cut through all the bureaucracy. We need to make sure we have the right people in place to get this done. A lot less happening, like I said in the last forum, we can double down on this, if things can be done better. There's a lot of concern with the triangle. There's different things on one side or the other. There's, that could be resolved shortly. I think more quickly than it is. I truly believe that. There's a lot more we can do. With that being answered, last thing I want to say, all of the abuse and intimidation attacks on other people and families can test the poor well, unacceptable. I don't have a degree either. People have been attacking me about that. You still didn't answer the questions. These are concerns we have as the public. Things Facebook have been deleting, and also the certificate. I had a certificate that you were touting on the Military Memorial. These things didn't get answered, so I'm still concerned about that. I know the public cares as well.
In the year 2011, the council passed General Plan 2035. It was sort of unusual in the life of the city. Most cities only look a few years in the future. And we decided that we were going to look 25 years in the future. We started in the year 2010. And 2035, what it does is it maps out what the city is going to look like at buildup. We have approximately 135,000 people. It's re-zoned the city so that we can have the growth of the industries of the future, meaning science, technology, engineering, med. It lays out the circulation element of the city to make sure we have the appropriate infrastructure. And as well, it took a look at our environment and said we need to take steps right now to preserve and protect our environment.
Thank you. Since I was involved in that general plan, I'll take it from there. One of the things we also need to do to make sure that we can sustain the growth and maintain services is the development code has to parallel our general plan. And admittedly, we need to revise that because when you change a general plan, you got to make sure the development code falls closely. Secondly, the thing we can do to make sure that services are maintained is to use comparative data. We need to be making data-driven decisions. Because of innovation, the way we used to do things may not be the best and most efficient way to do it now. What I foresee in the future is if we combine innovation with the current services that we already have, there may be room for savings in taking that money we saved and either give it back to the taxpayers or the developers, or reinvest it in a certain area to better serve the community.
I'll address the issue of certificate, seeing as how this is such an interest to you. If you all have talked about your local seat, and well, the someone who issued that it wasn't soliciting, it was a fundraiser. But please, go to www.lackington.com and look at my accomplishments, what I've done for our community. I worked tirelessly for three years. I don't ask for any compensation. I believe that how we're going to change the climate of our city is to create a synergy between new and old, and figure out that we need a variety of things, and that we need to increase our tax base, and not regulate individuals and create more taxes and process that inhibit growth. Again, the economic, the cash investment, it's the path of these resistance. We have a abundant amount of resistance, and that needs to change. There was a comment here in the last forum that we moved to a structure in two weeks for business in two weeks, but an average household can't get a garage built in seven months. Thank you.
I think we have to get competitive with our permits, our business license, and our fees. Menafee's business license is $65. Temecula's $35. Murieta is a $75 progressive fee. Seven pages of regulations, and you have to pick and choose where you stand. We lost the Mercedes dealership to Temecula. It takes too long. We had an Arco gas station which took two years to build in Murieta. They said they'd never build again. I'm opposed to the medical research technology because I've got the $15,000 report the city paid for that says do not put all your aids in one basket, it will fail. I want jobs, I want businesses. We need to get competitive with the other two cities. Everything's going to Menafee and Temecula. Thank you.
Well, first off, I think, I think Murieta is on track on the big business side. Can always get better, but you have to applaud the efforts we've made to that endgame. I think, exercise what Dana said, or to repeat what Dana said, I should say, that the small business, the people I'm talking about there, whether it's true or not, the perception is Murieta is not friendly to small business. And that needs to improve, both perception and reality, through reducing time, working with the city manager or the staff, anything I can do as a council member to help that, and also take a hard look at the future, make us more competitive within so many communities. I choose to go out and review the 2035 plan, and it is, it's a good plan. As Alan Wong said, it needs to be revised. We have saying in Marine Corps, "No plan survives first shot." So it always has to be looked at and revised constantly because situations and circumstances change.
Thank you. We did talk about the general plan, and that we have an outline to get to 2035. We need to be flexible with the development code that supports that. But let's talk about what we do have in Murieta. It's a fact, we have 89.5% retail occupancy. We have 97.1% industrial occupancy. We have 86.7% of our office occupancy. Coming out of a recession where we have, most cities would dream of having these kinds of numbers. Business is not going to Murieta, Menafee, or Temecula. They're staying here. We have more business licenses coming in this year than we've had an average of 500 over the last few years. We need to be flexible, we need to be business-friendly in terms of everyone is treated the same. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to our next question, and Rick, you'll start this one off here. The city of Murieta has its own police and fire departments, which make up a significant portion of the city's budget. Some have argued over the years that police and fire should be renegotiated to contract services with the county, which is a general... The city of Murieta has its own police and fire departments, which make up a significant portion of the city's budget. Some have argued over the years that police and fire should be renegotiated to contract services with the county, which could generate potential savings for the city. Would you support the current structure or contracting for these services?
Police department costs $24 million a year. The fire department costs $12 million a year. If you look at it as part of our total operating budget, that's 51%. That's well within line for what a city should be. I lived in Popneil, west of the time. You're good men and women from the LA Sheriff's Office supporting us. Guess what? We're 80 miles from headquarters. You're at the tail end of Charlotte for all the resources. So no, I would never support the end of the road with these four fire departments.
I've got the unique privilege and honor to serve both the county fire department as well as the municipal department where I'm at in City of Anaheim. I can tell you, there is a significant difference. And you can custom order your department, but where you lose is in local control. And here's what I mean by that. The county fire chief works for the board of supervisors, as he or she should. At the local level, you lose some of that authority. While you have answers to some of your questions, the ultimate person that the fire chief responds to is the county board supervisor. So you lose some of that local control. And let me reassure you, the city of Murieta is not one of the safest cities in the nation or more likely to survive a heart attack by accident. It's by specific design that started many, many years ago, and it has mostly to do with the very people that respond to you. Murieta simply has the best fire. Marietta simply has the best fire, least perfection out there, period. And I would not support any type of contract whatsoever.
This is a no-brainer for me. No. I have friends that are on PIA and the police department. I've been endorsed by our local fire department. These men and women have skin in the game. And when they respond, they respond to our community because they care about us and they could be one of their loved ones. They work hard. They wear five and six hats. They've waited a decade plus for new equipment. These are people that absolutely care. They don't just come to your home to respond. They change batteries in the fire detectors. They make omelets for our constituents, make sure prescriptions are filled. Our police department is second to none. Their integrity can't be questioned. Their love and passion for our community could never be questioned. So absolutely not.
I agree with four gentlemen before me. I would not take any cuts in pay for either the fire police. A good percentage of them live in our city. I would hope the city would bring our fire department back up to the pay that they took the cuts to help when the city was struggling. They did take three cuts in pay and three cuts in their cowbers. So I think we need to bring them back up. We have the most awesome fire department and police department in the state of California. Thank you.
I really can't say any more than I already said. Just repeat a couple of things, as Marilyn said. It's not a mistake that Marietta was a second-tier city with population 100,000 or greater. That's because of our police department. I agree with what Diana said. The fire department needs to be a priority. As a city council member, one of my funding priorities would be those funding lines for the city police and fire. That would be the primary budget areas I would call and I would support.
Thank you. I think all sort of agree that we would not support any kind of contracting for our police and fire. Marietta Incorporated for the very reason we have this one police and fire department and to not rely on the county for any of its services. The city really is in good shape when it comes to supporting our police and fire. We are looking at increased revenues coming in, so there's no reason to contract for a financial piece of it. You don't get the same service from the sheriff. They may say you have nine officers, but they're in area, not necessarily in a jurisdiction. Most of our police and fire live here and have vested interests in our community. So again, I would not support any type of contracting for our police and fire, but to keep our guys here and support them. Thank you.
So I'm going to run out of consensus. We definitely need to maintain the integrity of our department, fire department, police department. And I'm going to take a police perspective, while as a police officer, I'm fully understanding the importance of the local department. They have a beat on this. They have instant notice and changes. The people who go in it. Sheriff's Department is an outstanding job, which is important. They can switch and they go from one station to the next day. So there's not as much pride there, so to speak. I also believe the fire department needs a little more attention. I'm told that there's somebody that can fill me on anymore. But there's even a community member who gets the services from Cal Fire still, even though they pay for the Marietta taxes. That's what I'm told and I have still been looking into that. So that's a concern that may just the case. We definitely get that. They're paying, but also they're stacking. It's at dangerous legal levels where they get low, too much fire, it becomes a hazard to the person working and the public as well. They are doing an outstanding job. They always have and they are taken care of. Probably can be better.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, start around here. Please explain your understanding of the role of a city council member.
I'm going to break this down to you in three different sections. First, my role is to bring my qualifications and experience to a diverse council of five and put them to the best use for the citizens of Marietta. Two, we need to set policy that is consistent with the vetted goals that we established annually and that is from the feedback we receive from the constituents. The third portion is to listen to the voters and the residents and get results. And most importantly, while those are the three, the most important thing we need to do as a council member is to serve at the highest level of integrity.
I believe the draft had an open door policy. The draft is set and listen to the constituents and understand what they feel, what they think and what they want. You have to have the innate ability to walk in someone else's shoes and say your personal opinion inside and work with others. When it comes to my community goal, it comes from saying and going, what do people want? I have the innate ability to have somebody pick up a phone, can call and say, I'm concerned about this and that that issue is concerned, that it's not diminished. Just because it might not be so doesn't mean that's wrong how that person feels. So I want them able to establish a rapport with constituents. When they come up, they go, Jonathan, this is how I feel. Then we sit down and we figure out how to work it out as friends. And if that means I have to sit down and I'm out and cut a coffee or you come to my home for a beer, so be it. Let's do this. We can accomplish this together.
Our founding fathers had a vision. Serve and then go home. I want to serve and then go home. I did a petition to get rid of the red light cameras. We voted 57% to remove the cameras. We had two lawsuits against us and our city council did not listen to the people. They stayed neutral. We won the lawsuits. Then the camera company did something horrendous. Then the city council decided to remove the cameras. I believe it is our duty to listen to the citizens and vote for them. We have private property issues going on. They spoke not only at the city council, the city council rezoned anyway. Thank you.
Role of the city council member: to serve. That's the bottom line, my learning is to serve. I have a lifetime of service to this country and I want to serve my adopted local community now. Number two, it really hasn't been talked about, is to listen. You need to listen. You can't go in with preconceived opinions or views. You need to listen to all input. You need to talk to the city manager down the line, as well as you tell the council members. You need to build consensus, but bottom line with all that is still number one and always is to vote for the citizens in Marietta to be their voice and vote for them and vote for those programs, those offices that best serve them and take into account their rights.
Thank you. We've said it often that the role of city council is to serve, but further, the role of city council is to set policy and to implement that general plan. It's the legislative body for our city. And so there are ordinances and things put in place. That's also the role of the city council. They're the board of directors for the city. We're responsible for providing a safe, family-oriented community, which is part of our goals as a council in providing a safe community and public safety and fiscally responsible. All of those things were part of the role of the city council and to enjoy our, and to help all of our citizens enjoy that quality of life that we love so much here in Marietta.
I've dedicated my life to service through Boy Scouts and Eagle Scout, through military services with the Ranger and Recruiter, through being a police officer now, through serving with a football coach for Pop Warner Leagues and other various capacities. Services, working with the community in partnership is even more important. And I freely state as a key building of our policy, keep open-minded communication. But the even bigger role of the city council is not just to serve, but is to support. We need to get out of the way of the people, let business grow, let free market do what it's going to do and support the people, uplift you. That's our role. We want to work with you, rally you up, get out of your way when we need to, not open policy, just enough to serve and protect.
We've done a pretty good job of kind of describing the process. And you might think of it as kind of a circular loop. At the top of the organization, charge the city in area, it's you. You, the people. You are in charge of the city in area. You elect us to make policy, but the policy is based upon the goals that we set every year and we get done from listening to you. People who come to this job think it's power involved in this job. It could be further from the truth. There is no power in this job. What you have is influence. It's the city manager, the former government, where the city manager runs the city. So you learn to work through other people and again, it gets back to listening. In real short story, a resident calls me and says, I heard there's West Nile virus. I check it out with the city manager. He checks it out with vector control. Vector control says, yes, that's true. I get in touch with Supervisor Stone. Supervisor Stone tells vector control, get on it, and they did. And today I was able to respond to a resident, 17th Holdover Golf Course has infected and we're treating it.
Thank you. All right, our next question, Jonathan, you'll kick us off. As traffic increases in and around the city, what would you do as a member of the city council to address the traffic issues?
Start by speaking with the city engineers and trying to figure out the things that we've been stuck with for over a decade or since 1991. We have inherited the traffic issue that came from the county. I don't envy the position of anyone on this side that's had to deal with it, but we've dealt with it long enough. When I turn out a famous place to, and I want to go to 79 and it takes me 42 minutes, there's an issue and that issue needs to be addressed. We can't use communities to help ease the traffic burdens that we have. We have to sit and address the tough issues and figure out how we're going to do this. Nobody wants to commute two hours a day. 60% of this community commutes two hours a day and then come home to save the 40 minutes worth of traffic. It's time to address it.
As I said, the simple solution to address our traffic issue is synchronize the roads. The money is now available for Montez Sacramento. Add one second to the yellow and one second to the red. This will make our intersection safe and it will flow. Little one lane that is the perfect example of it. And we can get the money now from the state of California. Thank you.
Reviewing the capital improvement plan, there's a lot of projects in the works already, some of which have been funded, some of which have been completed, many of which are not funded yet. As a council member, I will do everything I possibly could to influence that and to promote expansions. And that's really, it's really a new rose. But again, I said at the beginning, I'm very focused on property and rights and that has to be taken into account too. We need to look at improving roads, widening roads wherever possible, working with the city mayor and all the things that we've addressed already. But you always need to remember ownership rights because I really don't want to take somebody's land, but unless we become in agreement, build consensus and do that. But that's really, we just have to expand what we have and install new roads as the city grows up. And lastly, as contractors come in and expand especially housing areas, we need to make sure we use the funds that they have available to do that road, to make sure not to put that on the road.
Thank you. One of the things that we can do is to, again, implement our capital improvements program, which has a number of projects for delivery in the next five years, about $70 million plus. Signal synchronization helps, but I have the ability to reach out and work with a number of regional agencies. Riverside Transportation Commission, the Western Riverside Council, Dorrance, which I work for, has a $3.7 billion transportation program, $35 million, which is already coming back for projects for residents here in Marietta. There's a measure A, there's development impact use, all of which, I don't know why we're reaching out to our partners because it's no longer just a city doing something alone. We need to work together and I think we can do that. A lot of opportunity out there to improve our circulation system.
So I'm one of the ones that commute two hours every day and that. So I feel the pain. I know exactly what it's affecting, quality of life and also affects our public safety. You know, it's hard to get somewhere even with lights and sound as well if the cars are moving. It is, as Taylor already mentioned, it's an intercity issue. We need to work with our partners. It's not just Marietta. We need to work with Temecula. We need to work with Menafy and our neighbors. We need to work with the counties. Can't you do this alone? Otherwise we're just doing, it's a bother. We need to expand on the existing projects that we have. There's a lot of it set in place, but we need to work on that. We need to continue to exist under the funding. Let's get that funded. This is finally what we can do. It is a project that falls under the role of public safety. And the long-term solution is we need to create local jobs. Let's stop the community. So let's get the local jobs. Let's bring the people here. Let's keep the people home. Let's stay here and that way eventually it'll wind itself down. And a big part of our problem is to slow and stop the high density housing, which is going to do the increase of activity.
One of the reasons we rezoned the Northeast Corridor from Office Research Park and Medical was the Woodbridge option. Traffic comes with growth and as we've stated earlier, we don't seem to be creating a lot of jobs. On 2011, we created 526 new businesses. 2012, 514. 2013, 530. And 2014, we're on track for 600. We had put in $100 million plus of infrastructure. That would include the 215 first phase widening. We're working on the second phase. We include, we are also going to start widening Clint Keith Road to Winchester beginning in 2015. I got the money from Riverside County Transportation Commission. It's enhanced. We're working on it. You were right, Anthony. We work with Temecula with the Cherry Avenue off-ramp. And we work with them on the Enos Jackson connection. Changing the lights, bad idea. We'd be out of sync with every other city in Riverside County.
In the early 90s, the growth of Marietta outpaced the infrastructure that was to follow afterwards. And actually, the traffic was very, very much more specked. And we had the late night public safety and traffic commission being well into after the midnight hour over this one issue. We reprioritized things and we put infrastructure first. And what you're seeing out there today, every single on and off ramp and overpass has been improved in Marietta in the last five years. We have several more to do. We are building new off-ramps. We have bridges that we literally built, the Ivy Street and the Heades. Those are regional efforts where we work collaboratively with other cities when before this council, the council members would not work together to connect those streets that connect our cities. We need to continue to address our roads as a regional issue and work collaboratively with neighboring cities. Every decision that we make on the council needs to have the future in mind and our current general plan did just that. We've been proactive on our infrastructure improvement and we need to continue to do that from here into the future.
Thank you, candidates. All right, Diane, you'll be first up on this next one. Marietta residents hold community involvement and volunteerism in a high regard. What city committees and or commissions specific to Marietta have you served on to gain experience and an understanding of how local government works?
I haven't served on any committees or commissions in the city of Marietta, but through my past history, I've been PTA fundraising chairman, raised $10,000 by myself at one event. Helped with the animal shelter when we had the fires going on. I studied government in school, in college. I volunteered to get rid of the red light traffic camera in the city. Took me two years. I learned how to write a petition, circulate it, raise funds, get an unvalued and fight two lawsuits. I don't believe our founding fathers' vision was everybody had to be a board member or work up. When you start a new job, you get trained on the job. So I'm willing to put my 100% effort in it and learn everything. I've attended 99% of the city council meetings. I read all the minutes. Thank you.
Well, the short answer to the question is none. And the reason is, my first seven years living in Murrieta, I was a uniform member of the military service. You don't get involved until the process, at least that's why I try. And then even the following four years until this summer, as a Department of Defense contractor, it's not prohibited, but it's not something that is desired for an employee to do. So that's a choice I made, and that's okay. I'm still serving my country in a different capacity. But as I said earlier, Murrieta is my adopted hometown. This summer, when I decided to run for city council, you know, I made changes in my life. I will be focused one-hundred percent, like Diane. I don't learn on the job, but it's not hard to learn. You know, you can understand budgets, and I know how to do a budget, and I know how to balance a budget. You know, the terminology may be different, but I also know how to build a census, and I know how to get the job done, and I know how to be decisive.
Thank you. I have served on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. I am in my second term on the planning commission. I am Supervisor Stone's appointee to the Oversight Committee for Successor Agency, which is in charge of widening down the development. And while it's easy to learn, some would say it's easy to learn on the job, being a city council member requires a lot of skill and knowledge coming forward as to how government works, how process is involved, and the learning curve that might have as just stepping into it could put you back some and not be part of that first hit the ground running with the team. It's important that the city council sets a tone for the city, and we need to act as a team. And I am a consensus builder. I put together a huge transportation program with fifteen cities in the unincorporated county. I think I can work with the four of them and give them, you know, to work as a team.
The direct answer is, and I have not served on any local committees or committees. However, no stranger to the political process, this works. Started at very young age, when I was a boy scout who went through this stuff. I read about citizenship, so people laughing when I mentioned youth. Moving on into the army, if you think there's no politics in the military, you're kidding yourself. I manage budgets, and I dealt with people of all ranks, walks of life, all around the world. And now I'm a police officer, I do it every day, continue to work with you, work with the team. I manage a million budget. I run the cadet program we have out there, which comes with a little bit of a budget. And it's, again, politics inside and out, it's all involved, it's all intertwined. And I just dedicate, you don't need to serve on a commission to know exactly how a city operates. You can be a member, you can be involved, and you can continue to serve in the practice.
I served in approximately someone around thirty or forty-five different committees and commissions. The one that I will talk about is I've served on the Veterans Committee. Mr. McGallister and I started the Veterans Committee about eight years ago. Since that time, we built a number of walls in Townsberry Park to honor veterans. And we still have World War II veterans who are still currently serving in the Veterans Committee. So for the record, I need to correct Mr. Andrew's Facebook post. While I appreciate the twenty-seven-hundred dollars plus that you raised from your friends, attendance at single meeting cannot remotely be construed as participation in the long membership of the Veterans Memorial Committee. Mr. Andrew, you never were or are a member of the Veterans Memorial Committee. Your Facebook post looks to those of us who serve, this is an example of the social media equivalent of stolen data. I'm sure you did not mean that, so I would just advise you that it really should be promoted. Thank you.
Brian, what's the question, volunteer in commission work?
It's volunteerism. And what city committees and or commissions specific to Murrieta have you served on to gain experience and understanding of how local government works?
My volunteerism started when I was in ninth grade or in high school. Superintendent of the School District, Chuck Van Weyrden, asked me to coach the youth wrestling team. And I did continue that until I was married two years after that high school. As a senior in high school, as a volunteer firefighter, we weren't allowed to do that. Couldn't respond, couldn't get money going to halls, but I could go to training, it was a privilege to do so. After I was married at the young age of twenty, we had, my wife and I volunteered and ran the high school youth group at our local church, and we also volunteered for Aparice at Oak Grove Institute, Rancho Amicitus. After we had kids, five years after marriage, I coached just about every school sport you can imagine, including little league, javelin football, soccer, basketball, and served on those sports. Was later appointed to the Public Safety Traffic Commission, then on the Planning Commission, served as a council member and mayor, also in the city of Anaheim. I was on the County Paramedic Advisory Committee, Quality Assurance Board, whatever stock hospitals, and the Wyoming State Reentry Child Program. And we also financially support many, many nonprofits in the local area. Thank you.
Well, the recognition from the assembly seems to be an issue again. It wasn't solicited. I was a fundraiser, and I absolutely enjoy doing it. You have a committee that's been there for a long time, a city mayor who felt that his opinions superseded people that sat there. When you look at the brown brakes today that are there, you can see that the names of the people that are in the strike there cannot be seen. Having said that, I've worked with the MTRAC, R.A. Guarding Wheelchairs. Three months ago, we were asked if we could obtain three wheelchair chairs. And when I got finished, we had thirty-three wheelchairs within six hours that were provided. These were mobilized wheelchairs. I worked for Pause for Patriots. I've also worked in my community for three years endlessly. Anyone that knows me knows, if you have a snake in your garage, give me a call, I'll come get it. If you need your car towed, I can help on there. I love my community, and I'm here to serve my community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian, next up here. Cities and counties work best when the elected officials work as a team. What experience do you have in consensus building? Give a specific example.
Okay, I will turn back to my military time again. Although many people will think it's a dictatorial type of organizations, it is not. You have to work and build consensus. I was a communications officer. I worked for the commanding general in charge of all Marines and Army forces in Vietnam, our province, when we went into pollution in two thousand and four. On very short notice, we had to assemble like two Army brigades, which organization of three thousand combat soldiers, into the Marine Force and turned it into a force of twenty-seven thousand. I didn't have command authority over those organizations. My general did, but I didn't. I had to work and build consensus. You have to, you have to work in anything you do, anything in my experience in the Marine Corps. And include non-combat roles, budgeting, things like that. You have to build consensus, you have to work with a low precision, you have to work with the personnel. So is that a difference? Is it different from the company and city services? Yes, but the concept is the same. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I worked for twenty-five level officials, so you can imagine, you have to build consensus on almost any program that you're working on. But a specific example is, I created and navigated transportation uniform mediation fee through fifteen cities, the unincorporated county, chambers of Congress, and a very dubious development community that was not interested in doing this. It is in place today. Sixty-seven projects later, everyone is a contributor for this project. So I have quite an ability to bring people together and to build that consensus. Thank you so much.
I have no stranger to working in a team effort, to everything we do is working with others. And when I try to convince them to lean one way or another, that's always the case. As a police officer, we don't rush anywhere by ourselves. We don't make decisions without already probably being trained. There's times where you ask, you have to make decisions, I don't. Everything we do in the military, kind of hard to say, you do it as a team, you don't just act. You have to make good concessions and work with others. And I've learned that probably most of my time, but eight years of marriage is rather the best way to build a consensus on property, on the earth. But it's through all my time, through law enforcement, military, even the church functions that I had in part. Working with others and coming to an agreement that's going to best suit and benefit the people, the people you're there to serve and to work with instead of yourself.
Early tonight, I talked about General Plan twenty thirty-five. So normally what cities do is they outsource a general plan. And I've seen that done much before, and I didn't like the way the results turned out because there wasn't enough focus on all the arms of the general plan. This time we did it, but we did have a outcast consultant conducting focus groups for us, neighborhood meetings for us, and all members of the General Plan Committee, which was the senior leadership of the city of Murrieta and council members. We all participated in making sure that every particular neighborhood in the city was visited, and we talked to residents in the neighborhood, and we got the feelings and thoughts as wide a body as possible. At the end, we attended consensus, consensus doesn't mean everybody who supported the general plan. But for the majority of folks, it was an effort to respond to the needs of our citizens.
Before I start the answer, just wanted to respond to Matthew. There's no consensus with, when you're dealing with, there's only one vote that counts in that first. Council member gives a statement, and I was going to actually relate to the general plan. So I'll take another question on this, because I have a pretty quiet range of experience. You know, consensus building comes in many different forms. And I was a hotshot with the US Forest Service, and we flew to Jacksonville, Wyoming on a hundred-thousand-acre wildfire. And we did not have an autocratic type of captain. We would always turn with the crew and say, what do you think? Where should we start? And when you're fighting a hundred-thousand-acre wildfire, you don't want to make the wrong decision. So we had, we leaned on the experience of the crew, and together, we worked as a team to determine what would be the best strategic and tactical response to where we construct line. Also, to tap on the general plan, when that was started, I said I wanted it done in a year because it was so outdated. It was violent, we didn't have done. Planner said it would take three years, I said, I'll give you eighteen months, and they completed it. They completed it with one extension, just on a technicality, and it was consensus building from the ground up, from the residents to the commissions to the council to find approval. Thank you.
Consensus building is in our form. A lot of things that I've been fortunate to do is to get people together to accomplish things. We've proved that in our own community. I've reached out to our sister cities. I've said that I've been accused of oversimplifying things, but the reality is, I am the only candidate on this stage visiting me that's been endorsed exclusively by Mayor Scott Man. And then I reached out to these other cities and said, I will do what it takes to work with our sister cities and anybody that sits on this stage tonight that's elected. And even if not elected, I will work endlessly to help do whatever it takes to make our community thrive. Thank you.
As I stated, when I was sixteen, I started working at my dad's plumbing store. By the time I was eighteen, nineteen, I was in charge of the plumbers and all the counter people. It took work, I had to balance the budget consensus. I had to learn more because I was young. The plumbers were teaching, we worked together, we got manuals, we got books. As I grew and changed jobs, H I S, I had to work with a team. We were sent all over the world, Hong Kong, Bahamas, St. Martins, working to repair gas bases, set up their whole computer system. It was a team effort. We worked, we joined forces, we got information to each other, and it's really easy to work with everybody. You just get the information and the data. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On our next question, Diane will kick this one off for us. Since this is a lot like a job interview, can you please give us your education background, work history, and current employment?
Education, work history, and current employment?
Current employment. No, yeah, not very small words, correct? Long time, right down.
Okay, I have a bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M University in history. I have a wide range of public and private sector experience. In Texas, I worked for American Engineering and Paulson Temple, Stan's Engineering. In Nevada, I worked for SMA Engineers. In California, I worked for Inhemit for NDS Lowry. I've worked for the county transportation departments. And now I've currently been at the Western Riverside Council of Dolphins or I'm deputy executive director, managing multi-billion dollar programs for local agencies and providing a book that heat them and having local control. So I have a very broad background, and I bring a unique set of skills to the DMS from public and private sector for community planning, transportation infrastructure that currently is not on the council and would be the most important thing to have when coming into this new growth cycle.
My education goes back to junior college from this point. I finished my associate's in police technology recently, and I'm still working on my bachelor's. Most of my education comes from life experience in my short thirty years. Being one of thirty out of three hundred applicants for the arranger and doctor nation program. It helped with the program quickly. As far as my job history goes, during high school, I had some lines in this job, so I joined the military. And four and a half years of military service, mostly with the second range retired, and then going out as a recruiter for the last year and a half. Let me tell you, that's probably the toughest job the military has, being a recruiter. And now I'm a police officer. That's what I currently do, I haven't done, I do it very successfully. I'm already on the track for promotion, being looked at and moving up. So here's my, my next goal is to continue my track of service here with the city of Murrieta.
Graduated from Fordham University in New York City with a degree in journalism in nineteen sixty-eight. Graduated from University of Colorado, Colorado, the master's in public administration in nineteen seventy-five. Graduated from the Air War College in nineteen ninety-three. Served thirty-two combined years, explaining the link between active duty for the fighters for ten and a half years in Vietnam and all around the world. Air National Guard weapons officer for ten and a half years. Air Force Reserve for eleven years, worked five years in Pentagon with the acquisition of billion-dollar weapon systems. At the same time, I also worked for Westin House Electric Corporation, a labor worker from an aerospace corporation, and marketed aerospace equipment to allied nations all around the world. My current employee is the six-hundred-dollar one cent that I get from the city of Murrieta.
Went through the University of Florida's organizational leadership program, an associate's degree in fire technology, associate's degree in allied health, fire academy graduate, licensed paramedic and nationally registered paramedic in California and the United States. Started my career in the fire service here as a volunteer in the city of Murrieta. Was a hotshot for the forest service, worked six years with Cal Fire, two years in the command center, flew on the helicopter on the heli-tac team. Got my job started in nineteen ninety-eight with the city of Anaheim promoted from firefighter to firefighter, paramedic, engineer, paramedic, fire captain, paramedic. Currently, fire battalion chief in administration. Also been assigned the emergency management director for the entire city. Managed about twenty-five million dollars worth of grants, which I pursued, right, followed track, and big program management for. On the side, before that, during, was a franchise owner with the rights for a company called One Acre Porta, and also had a landscaping contracting business while I was going through college to help supplement the income. And currently, while the pay does reflect the job you do in your council member character.
That's a lot in one minute. Never, as I said, I didn't have the opportunity. Never, as I said, I didn't have the opportunity, the honor to get an advanced degree. I did email in for the electable apprentice program together. Married my wife, married in twenty. We had the blessing from God to have children early. Worked very hard, obtained my first business, built it rapidly, worked for the state, had a bankruptcy. Rebounded from that. Proud to say since then, I've owned property inspection services. I'm a spec builder. I've been involved with over a hundred and thirty homes to be developed. I've worked with Home Depot, Pizza, Shady's Pizza, with either maintenance or infrastructure. Today, recently, I'm semi-retired because I've been opening a business yet here in Marietta, which I don't afford to do in sin. And except that, I'm a consultant for property management and storage facilities, which I'm involved with outside Riverside County. Thank you.
I went to Colleton Junior College from sixty-nine to seventy-two, got married, and moved to Riverside and had some babies. Then in ninety-three, after my husband passed, I went back to school at the age of forty. To California Baptist University, graduating cum laude with a BS in Information Systems. And at the same time, I was going to either Palomar, Menne, or Riverside, whatever college I could find, the class I needed to get my AA and AS degree in math and science. And I also passed thirteen Microsoft certification tests and then became a database administrator. One of the jobs I had was Riverside PD. I was the database administrator. HIS, the database administrator, straiter, straiter flown all over the United States, including Hong Kong, Bahamas, St. Martin. My last job was Palace Casino and I quit to tell my parents my mother was dying of leukemia. I am retired. Thank you.
I received my degree from Frampton State College in Massachusetts back in eighty-two and then I went into Marine Corps. Through my current Marine Corps, I've been in multiple schools. Highlights of one year long Advanced Communication Officers Course and another year long Command and Staff College, which is equivalent to getting a master's degree, but I never pursued that in the early. I did pursue a MBA, but only the first couple of courses. And then Desert Shield, as a storm came up, I had dropped the courses and I ended up picking them up again. Drop out, our focus in the last major part of my Marine Corps career was at the Lieutenant Colonel Marine Corps. I was basically the chief information officer for the first marine division here in Pendleton, in Iraq. And then Marine Corps installations west, which included all Marine Corps bases in the west coast, in New Mexico, Arizona, Dupan, and Barstow. All the way to the water trading center in the mountains. I worked with the Department of Defense contract to do two different companies. Trying to bring in a product for joint tactical radio system for three years. And then one year, working on cultural trade for the Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. And I retired from there this summer and now I officially retired Marine officer.
Thank you, Karen. Patrick, where are we at right now with questions? Okay, go with two more questions. All right, now we're back to here with Matthew. The next question, do you support hiring additional police officers? Do you support hiring additional police officers?
Yes. Yes, but it's something that needs to be viewed. We have, they still need to reduce their per cap, huh? But it's also a needs of the department. So having spoken with the chief out there discussing his needs up here and speaking with some of the officers. Staffing isn't necessarily the overbearing issue. They like a more pristine process. Something to be discussed is lab opportunities instead of also some of the labs. It's been mentioned before, but the crime analysis is something that they discussed. You know, in form, they need more crime analysis. So something better, make the police work more efficient. You can put so many boots on the ground and have five or six officers showing up to one noise complaint. It's just, it's not going to look good. Where it stands now, I do support it. We could use a few more. I know there's maybe one on eyes becoming an issue. Maybe there's pullback from control to go address that issue when we get back to those positions.
In the spring of twenty thirteen, both the police chief and fire chief presented their five-year strategic plans. The police five-year strategic plan is broken into two parts. Part one said that the economy just plies along. By the year twenty seventeen, we need nine new officers. The other part said, if the economy really takes off and we start to see growth here, then we're going to need nineteen new officers. Of course, I support doing it because Matthew, who knows a lot more about it than I do, since he's a police officer, alluded to your staffing dimension and a host of factors. And this year, what was asked for by Chief Hadden was four police officers, gotten. And he also asked for a crime scene analyst and a code enforcement department class to pay. So we could get a code enforcement supervisor that could be competitive in salary scale.
In short, yes, we've never reached our goal of having one officer per thousand residents. And that is the benchmark that we need to continue to strive for. However, it needs to be a balanced approach. We can't spend money that we don't have in a checking account. And also, we need to do standards and coverage where we utilize empirical data to make data-driven decisions. Like I mentioned earlier before, there's a lot of innovation out there that makes jobs easier. Can we use, utilize technology to free up funds and hire more officers for those trades? But overall, absolutely, I would absolutely support hiring more officers. And I will tell you this, I know the police force out there and our fire service. We get away with adding less officers because the individuals that we hire are experienced and they are second to none. And we need to continue to do that so we maintain an efficient police force.
I absolutely agree. I believe that from the steel of the chief and the fire department, that we need to take note that over the next year to two years, that we need to have at least seven more firemen. Then over the next decade, we're going to need to develop and build a new station. Other than that, our first responders should be our number one priority always because that's what attracts people to our community, that we're safe, that they know that their children are safe. And then if we need a first responder, that they can get here quickly. And I believe that that should be our priority, the first and foremost.
I absolutely agree with these gentlemen. It should be one police officer per thousand. And we definitely need more firemen. We should have four per truck. If funds are there, absolutely, let's hire them and keep our city the safest city. Our seniors, our youth protected by the fire department. Thank you.
Sure, yes, my fund has already been stolen. I support for one officer per thousand. You have to look into it, take into account the future growth of the city as well. And when I talk about infrastructure growth, it's not just roads or other things. We have to also look at police force, support the population of one hundred and six thousand. Needs to be a larger police force if the population grows to one hundred and thirty thousand. So that has to be taken into account as much as possible as a claim consideration. But my number one priority, quite frankly, would be the fire department. They took a lot of cuts since two thousand and eight. And sitting down with them, you know, I'm not just talking about the frozen positions. But, you know, I live in the area that is not supported by the community. Cal Fire's response where I live. I didn't know that until I had a sit down with the fire department. So, you know, it's not my interest. I just believe that our fire department needs to be one of our number one priorities along with the police department.
Marianne, the question was specific to the police department, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Absolutely, I would support hiring additional public safety officers. If Chief Hadden suggested that that is what we need to do. One of the things in talking to the chief, his number one priority is to get onto the shared radio system. That allows for our officers to speak to anyone at any time and keeps our officers safe going into a situation and allows them to communicate. I also want to look at what civilian positions or what positions could be filled by civilians. We could, the sworn officers back out on the road, in the streets, who do law enforcement, which is what they want to do. One of the things is the crime analyst. And some of the explorer program, things that officers are currently doing, things civilians could do. So that would also free up officers. So I absolutely support our chief in his needs and want to help him in any way we can get that. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last question.
Patrick, are you going to give candidates a three-minute of time to respond to some of the things that I'd like them? Is that just the closing?
One minute. Is it one or two minutes in closing? Is it one minute? So one minute in closing, you'll have that opportunity to say what you'd like.
We have to use our closing to address things that didn't.
Okay, so our last question.
And we're all here to hear what they have to say.
What's the format, Patrick?
It's one minute.
It's one minute. Right. Okay, so our last question before closing statements is this, and we'll start with, I believe it's Rick. How many council meetings have each of you attended in the last year and how long have you lived in the city of Marietta?
That's a short question.
That is a short response. I attended all of the council meetings, you know, last year. And I've lived in the city of Marietta for fifteen years.
I've missed very few city council meetings. I think I've missed two for vacation purposes. And I've lived here forty-two years. And I'll spend the next forty-five seconds of time just correcting some things that I've heard tonight. And I did, I give you the courtesy of correcting. Scottman actually endorsed me as well, so you can not be sole enforcement. The cameras that were brought up, and I'm saying this because the residents deserve to know the facts, not just information from out there. The ballot measure that was passed went before a judge and was not, it was an illegal delegation of authority. Couldn't take down the cameras based on a vote. But what the council did is we did consider that vote and the council voted, and I voted for it, to take down the cameras. That's how they came down. Judge said you couldn't delegate that authority. So the council ultimately voted to take those cameras down. The synchronization of lights in Marietta Hot Springs, those lights are synchronized. There is a volume bomb, Marietta Hot Springs bottle net at Margarita. If you do anything other than keep those lights synchronized what they are now, you will have a bottle net at the fifteen freeway. We have infrastructure improvements starting in twenty fifteen to expand Marietta Hot Springs. And when that does, we will readjust the synchronization. Thank you.
All right. I plan on living in Marietta for the rest of my life and generations to come. I love this to be, I would be honored to serve. I've been here approximately four years. I've tried to attend every council meeting possible. I've never missed a board of directors meeting or ranch or anything that I felt that I needed to be civically involved with. The last few weeks I haven't been able to attend because it's been a great learning for understanding what it takes to get out in campaign. So my feet are sore. I have a lot of blisters on my hands and I've learned a lot. And I've learned a lot of respect for the people that are up here this evening. And I'd be more than willing to work with any of them anytime. Thank you.
I've lived in Marietta since nineteen eighty-eight. And I've attended this year, at least now the city council meetings, probably seventy-five percent of them. I've been doing a lot of door-to-door walking in the evening. As far as the cameras, Pete Lepesco from Pacific Justice was willing to defend the second lawsuit. He was willing to go all the way to the California State Supreme Court. He was in contact with our city attorneys and they chose not to inform the city council or the city council chose not to use him. He was going to do it free of charge to defend the citizens. Thank you.
I started attending city council meetings this past summer when I decided I was going to run. I did miss one this summer of a vacation. And I didn't plan whether elected or not to be ready to attend the city council meetings. I've lived in Marietta since two thousand and two. I bought my first monthly home. As an adult, here in Marietta, and this is where I've decided to stay. And this is where I seek to serve. If elected, that's exactly what I am, I have the privilege, and I do not have the privilege to serve, am I elected or not?
Thank you. City council meetings, I've been attending very regularly since about February. But this candidacy does take some time and you do miss it. So I then watched them on TV at home. So that's been an interesting thing to do with that. I have lived in Marietta since nineteen ninety, so it's coming out on twenty-five years. And growing up in a military family, we lived all over the world. And in our early career, my husband and I, twenty-seven years now, moved around until we came to Marietta. And we said, "You know what? We're going to plant our roots here and we're going to stay here. And if we need to commute that out, which we need, which is why we need to do more jobs here so we can stay." We're here to stay and I want to serve this community as best I can and bring all the skills that I have to there, to the DS. Thank you so much.
Some residents from the San Diego area, they work in the town of Oklahoma, and I watched it change from that. I moved up here about five years ago to get away from there. And while I was here these last couple of years, I've watched it change dramatically as the progress grew, which was outstanding. But that's a concern. So I've started attending when I can. Between campaigning, raising a family, spending a full-time working full-time. It is difficult to make doggies, but as I mentioned, we have the webcams. I do have a lot of bits for it. Two might email. I review them. I can read the word. I have my phone. So once campaign toned down, obviously, I don't have the time to make the priorities change and go get out there for one more year. But I do make it when I can. And to wrap up my last ten seconds, I think a lot of the areas have been cleared, a lot of the issues have been answered. And I hope it's cleared up for a lot of the people well. So thank you.
Tonight, you referred to the incumbents from the South, Mr. Wong.
Excuse me, excuse me. Did you kick off that question? Just want to clarify. You did quick cut off that question.
It's only just ten seconds.
That's all right. Excuse me. We had to kick off. Now we're going to go ahead and do closing statements. We'll start with three rank, with Dan first. We'll move all the way back through Matthew here. He'll have one minute for that. Pardon me? I'm sorry, this, I just meant to, I'm sorry. Matthew's last. In the opening, if, okay, with Dan, go ahead and all the way through Matthew. Thank you. You may go. Thank you.
I spoke earlier about qualifications, experience, and results. So what have I done for Marietta? I provided thirty-five million dollars in road funding for air change projects and road services. Citizens of Marietta enjoy today. And that created over thirty-six hundred jobs. I'm part of a team that created a hero program that provides financing for energy and water conservation benefits for homes and businesses in Westwood County throughout the state. Specifically in Marietta, nine hundred fifty-seven jobs created, eighteen point five million in value, creating one hundred and eighty jobs here in Marietta and over sixteen hundred jobs in the region. On the planning commission, I've been part of a team which reviewed projects and recommended to the city council residential and commercial, including Drywall. I embrace caring and connecting community where the residents and businesses are treated like the valuable customers that they are. I know number four, please remember, Ruth Ann Taylor Berger, Ronnie Samon Vallet. Thank you so much.
I've said this word many times. If you have any other questions in my opening statement. Sir, I have an adult lifetime of service. Different from many of the qualifications and services that many other candidates up on this stage have, I imagine. But I do have a lot of experience in a variety of different areas. Specifically, towards the end of my Marine Corps career, I managed personally, was responsible for a budget equal, almost equal to the budget of Marietta. I know how to be decisive. I know how to work with people. I know how to collaborate. I know... I know how to work with people, I know how to collaborate, I know how to get a job done. One of the best things that's happened for me since I decided to run for this position is I am walking this town. I have not been, if you ever got a letter from me yet, it's because I haven't made it to a neighborhood, but I am walking and I am learning this town inside and out, and I'm learning the problems. I can hit the ground running. My name is Brian Wong and I ask for your vote in the number four. Thank you.
I too have been walking door-to-door and hearing the good and bad and the difference from the city. Yesterday, I resolved a mosquito problem in Mapleton. They have numerous issues, they don't feel like they're part of the city, as in where Brian lives, I walked over there, door-to-door knocking, the people feel like they're excluded, they don't see the police, the fire. Mapleton has three different city, school taxes on their property, they're concerned about that. I'm running because I want to be the voice of the people. I'm listening to them, I hear them, we're worried about jobs. Broadway Street has some major traffic problems, I've been working with them, offered to babysit, and I want our roads fixed. Thank you. Vote for Dynasty or the Civil War.
All right. I believe that my vision is the same as most in our community. I'm not really good at reading from speech enough, go from my heart, but I'm not here to stop progress. I want to bring the memories that I believe that all people want. I would like to see the Golden Triangle completed. I would love to walk into Old Town Marietta with my family by ice cream, sit on a bench and enjoy historical Marietta as a family. I believe we can do that. I believe in free market principles, that the market should dictate what should be built and how to cooperate with those builders to get that accomplished. I am pro property rights, I do not believe in messing with Proposition thirteen in any way, I would say the same grace to our state. I think that we need to create and stop regulating. Love for Jonathan Ingram, if you believe the same things that I believe. Thank you.
Growing up in Marietta, my family soon found out that it's a very special place. It was special when it was a town in two thousand and it's special today in a city of a hundred and six thousand. The question you will have to ask yourself as voters in November fourth is, who are you going to trust with a hundred and forty-five million dollar budget of your money? Who's going to bet that appropriately? Who's going to do their homework and spend it wisely so that you have the best return on investment? You would like to be in two thousand and ten with the highest number of votes in the worst of economic times, and we are much, much better off than we were back then. The Inland Empire Economic Partnership voted Marietta the number one business, or number one city for business retention and creation. We're also recognized as the best, number four best place in the nation to raise a young family. We have top-rated schools and a top-rated public safety system, and that did not come by accident. I'm very proud and honored to be one of the only candidates endorsed by both police and fire, and you have to ask yourself why? Proven leadership, experience, and character. My name is Alan Wong. Marietta is my home, it always has been and it always will be. Thank you.
Well, I too have been endorsed by both police and fire. And the reason I went again is because proven performance. There's six thousand goals, economic development. I brought Lola Linda and one thousand jobs. And no, we didn't wait to construct an offering, because it takes fifteen years to do an offering, but the planning for that offering started in the year two thousand and nine. Since Lola Linda has opened, that's three hundred open-heart surgeries and two hundred and fifty step E procedures in the federal text. Public safety, number eight city, number eight nation, and number two for violent crime. Finance, Miranda Blatt, infrastructure, a hundred million dollars in infrastructure put in. Community services, fifty parks to be maintained. Caring and connecting community, we intend Marietta connects for residents, Marietta connects for seniors, and Marietta connects every month at the Chamber of Commerce and Coffee with the City. Vote for Marietta.
Well, thank everyone for coming out today, taking time out of your day to come see us. Thank you to my colleagues up here, to the Chamber of Commerce, for all the things on. It's good to see so many people understanding the importance and the impact of local government. One thing, I'm not here to shake things up, I like the direction this city's going. I think we can double down on that, we can continue to make it better. For the most part, I think we are having the right direction, I'm making many issues. Don't let this youthful appearance and soft smile fool you. I am a sheepdog and I can bear my teeth when I need to, and I am not intimidated easily or at all. Where have you been like, past, where you are now, where you're going? I need you. I'm there, I've been living in this community, in the veterans' service in this community. I have leadership abilities and a unique decision-making ability, I can show up with the worst of situations, make a good solid decision, and I can fix it. I do it every day. I promise to earn your trust, I promise to do what it takes to earn your trust. And lastly, I'm not doing this with a title, I already have the two best titles, but I
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. Another round of applause for all our candidates. The candidates forum will be recorded for your information and the forum will be uploaded to YouTube afterwards for everyone to view, completely unedited. Thank you for coming tonight. This concludes the Marietta City Council Candidates Forum. Have a good night, everybody.